For a lot of years, I never looked to see who else I could make up my own mind. You know what I mean?
Sure.
So it's hard to say.
Already, yeah, that's right.
But yeah, I'm self-aware now.
And those are townhomes and those homes are okay. I'm okay. I already have water and a tub, if not, be here.
I'm here. I appreciate my side.
You're next.
It's all.
I guess that makes sense.
I'd like to call the meeting order of the planning and zoning.
Okay.
Today is November seventeenth. Uh, I'd like to, uh, roll call, please.
Chairperson Coscosas?
Here.
Vice Chair Vesey?
Here.
Mr. Rockline?
Here.
Ms. Early?
Here.
Ms. Swenson?
Here.
Ms. Weaver?
Here.
Mr. Collins?
Here.
Okay, at this time, I'd like for us to stand, oh, anybody in the audience, please silence your cellphones. Uh, those on the dais as well. Staff for the Pledge of Allegiance. Flag though? Yeah. It's there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And now, um, Mr. Vesey has allowed me to give the, the, uh, reflection for today. Uh, what I would say is this, we just celebrated last week Veterans Day. And, you know, if you know a veteran, thank them for their service. Don't wait for Veterans Day to do that. You should do that every time you see a veteran, number one. Number two, Thanksgiving is approaching. If you know a family that's in need, please reach out to them. And as, as we are fortunate in our lives, we should be, uh, provide that fortune to them as well. Um, I want to thank everybody for coming. Um, you know, we live in a great country that allows us to have difference of opinion, to sit at a dais, to discuss things, to have people present a case. Um, regardless, uh, we are fortunate enough to have the country that allows us to do that. And for that, I, I thank you and I, and I'd like to go ahead and, uh, please be seated. Perfect, okay. All right. Um, on the consent agenda, next item, you'll see minutes from, uh, August twenty-first of twenty-three, September of twenty-three, November of twenty-three, January of twenty-four, and September of twenty-five. Um, some of those had got, gotten lost along the way, so we are actually going back to, to approve those minutes. Um, do we need, uh, council, we, we don't have to go through each one, we can just do it as a consent item?
We do it as one consent.
Okay, so I, I'd like to have a motion. Does anybody, uh, does anybody want to pull any of the minutes from the consent agenda and have a discussion on them?
No.
No? Then I'd like to see a motion as to consent for all of those minutes.
And I would make that motion.
I'll second.
Is there a second? Okay, uh, roll call, please.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Swenson?
Yes.
Ms. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Rockline?
Yes.
Vice Chair Vesey?
Yes.
Chairperson Coscosas?
Yes. Um, this is a quasi judicial board as well. And with that, we have council go ahead and make the announcement as to the role of the quasi judicial board. And I swear again of any speakers.
This is a quasi judicial proceeding with the Planning and Zoning Board acts in a quasi judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi judicial hearing, it is not the board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi judicial hearing, the board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant. If you're going to speak tonight, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm your testimony before the Planning and Zoning Board shall be the truth so help you? Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Ordinances and resolutions, our first item on the agenda is Resolution twenty-two thousand five dash sixty-two, which is quasi judicial regarding the conditional use to allow a restaurant slash tavern in the T four B transect of the special area plan on property located at three twenty-five East Lemon Street. That's application twenty-five dash sixty-nine, and I will turn, turn it over to staff for presentation.
Okay, Ally Keane, Principal Planner with the Planning and Zoning Department. Um, again, this is a conditional use request to allow a restaurant tavern at the property located at three twenty-five East Lemon Street. Uh, the property is just under a half an acre in size. Um, it is located within the city's Sponge Docks and downtown CRA Special Area Plan, specifically within the downtown Gateway Character District and the T four B residential industrial office transect zone. Uh, the site is outlined in red here on the screen. It's located at the northwest corner of East Lemon Street and South Gross Avenue. Um, the special area plan's boundary is just south of East Lemon Street. Uh, this site, as well as the properties in the media area, are within the T four B transect zone. Uh, but it's important to note that this property is, uh, just one block south of the T five B district, which is the Smart Code's main downtown commercial, uh, transect zone. Uh, this property is the former site of the Silver King Brewing, uh, Brewing Company, and that operated up until, uh, twenty-two thousand twenty-two. The proposed restaurant is going to occupy approximately twenty-five hundred square feet of the existing building in the area outlined in red here on the screen. Uh, they're looking to provide indoor and outdoor seating. Uh, the property is, uh, located in the historic district, and the structure itself is considered a contributing altered structure. The original brick portion, which is in the restaurant area, which is this section right here, was the city's original jailhouse, and the, um, remaining portion was a fire, firehouse. Um, they are not proposing any sort of exterior modifications at this time, so Heritage Preservation Board approval is not, uh, required at this time. The remaining portion of the building, um, is going to be occupied by a custom printing and fulfillment business, which is Infinite Print, and that is operated by the property owner. Uh, they have entered, they have indicated that the hours of operation, uh, will not interfere with the proposed restaurant, but regardless, the printing processes, uh, do not produce any sort of noise or odors that would provide any sort of nuisance to the restaurant patrons. The Smart Code does provide some, uh, limitations for retail establishments within the T four B transect zone. Um, those limitations can be adjustable by warrant. Um, one of the limitations is with regard to seating. Uh, this district is limited to a maximum number of seats, which is forty-nine seats. Uh, the applicant is requesting warrant approval to allow them to have up to one hundred and twenty-four seats, and that's split between indoors and outdoors with the outdoor seating in the rear of the building. Um, they're looking to have approximately ninety-two seats inside and thirty-two outdoors. Uh, the application did go before the city's technical review committee. Um, that does include our fire marshal. He did a preliminary review of their seating plan, uh, found that they could have indoor occupancy of about ninety-five people, which is consistent with what they're proposing. Uh, there are a few considerations with seating. Um, one, at the state level, there are various requirements when you're looking to get an alcohol license. Uh, for a special restaurant alcohol license, which is a license for establishments that have fifty-one percent of their sales is in food, um, it requires you to have a minimum of one hundred and twenty seats. Um, the next is, this is a historic building. We know it was previously used as a brewery, um, not too long ago. Twenty-two is when they closed their establishment. And then, again, as I mentioned previously, this property is located at the edge of downtown. It's only one block south of Tarpon Avenue, and it's in a mixed-use area that has retail, office, industrial, and some residential. The Smart Code, um, strongly encourages pedestrian access at the street level and street access, um, for your primary entrances. Uh, the applicants are looking to utilize the, uh, west side entrance as the main entrance for the restaurant, which is from the parking lot here in red, um, as opposed to the Lemon Street entrance, which is circled in yellow. The primary reason is due to the location of the kitchen, which is situated right by the Lemon Street entrance. They're looking to utilize this more for loading and unloading. Um, there is an existing narrow walkway that connects the, uh, Lemon Street sidewalk back to this, uh, entranceway, but according to the survey, it's only about two and a half feet wide. Um, it is recommended, if that is to be the main entrance, that that be widened to really be usable for pedestrians. Zooming out a little bit, uh, the adjacent property to the north is a city-owned parking lot. There is an existing four-foot-wide walkway that extends into the subject property, and it terminates right at the edge of the parking area. Um, a connection between this sidewalk to the main entry of the restaurant, or the proposed entry, uh, would be beneficial, not only for onsite circulation, but also circulation throughout downtown. Um, it also would, you know, meet the overall intent of the special area plan and enhance pedestrian circulation. Looking at your conditional use criteria, uh, the proposed use does conform with the Land Development Code as well as the Smart Code requirements uh, with regard to compatibility to existing and planned uses in the area. Um, again, this is in the downtown Gateway Character District. Um, there are a mixture of uses within the area, uh, including retail, office, industrial, and residential. The property is only one block south of Tarpon Avenue, which is the edge of downtown, where you can find several restaurants, breweries, cafes, and bars that are similar to what the proposed uses. Um, and further, the property was previously a brewery up until twenty-two thousand twenty-two, and staff does feel that the proposed use is consistent with the existing and planned uses established in the special area plan. Oops. Um, skipping to the impacts historical environmental resources. Um, again, the property is in the historic district, and the structure is a, um, contributing altered structure. They're not proposing any sort of exterior modifications that would require Heritage Preservation approval. Uh, the proposed use will not negatively impact the historic, uh, significance of the structure, rather make use of the existing historic building within the heart of downtown. Um, and it's not on a environmentally sensitive area. With respect to property values, uh, the site, again, is in a mixed-use area uh, with industrial, office, retail, and residential. The proposed restaurant and tavern will occupy an existing structure within the city's downtown, uh, recently used as a brewery, and is not expected to adversely impact the surrounding property values. Uh, the city is able to provide, uh, public facilities to the property in the proposed use. And the proposed use does provide, or does represent efficient and orderly development um, by utilizing the existing historic structure. It also enhances and carryouts the intent of the special area plan and supports existing downtown uses. And then lastly, the proposed use is not exist, or not expected to adversely impact general health, safety, and welfare. Um, as with any application, they are required to meet all applicable building, fire, and health department codes, and they will be required to obtain a local business tax receipt to operate the establishment. Uh, with that, staff does recommend approval of Resolution twenty-two thousand five dash sixty-two, including the warrant request for increased seating. Uh, we do have four recommended conditions that are shown here on the screen. Uh, those include, uh, one, that the maximum number of seats is limited to one hundred and twenty-four. Uh, two, the walkway connecting the Lemon Street public sidewalk and the proposed main entrance, which is the west side entry, shall be widened to a minimum of four feet and extended to connect to the pedestrian walkway leading to the city parking lot to the north. Uh, these improvements should be included with the building permit application for interior modifications. Uh, number three, the Lemon Street door must remain operational and have the appearance of an entryway. And the last, the business tax receipt must be obtained within twelve months. Uh, the application was properly noticed, and we have not received any sort of written notifications. With that, I'm happy to answer questions.
I guess we'll start on this end of the dais. If anybody has any questions, uh, we'll start from the end and work our way this way.
And good evening. One thing that you said there was going to be no modifications to the exterior on the proposed entrance. It looks just like a side door. Is that going to be, there, I know there wasn't no recommendation to make look like the main entrance. Uh, it's probably something I'd like to see, but, um, I, I, I guess I'll ask you the question if that was brought up.
So, not, not this time, switching out the door was not brought up, but I will say if they do switch out the door, that may be something that is required to get reviewed by the, um, historic board.
Maybe not switched out, but just like, uh, like, uh, covered
Mm-hmm.
uh, with the sign that, that way is not, I mean, it just looks like a side door, is that's all?
Yeah. Yeah, no, nothing, um, to that extent was discussed at this time.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we're not going to skip. You have any questions?
I have a question, but I didn't know.
Go ahead, I'm, I'm gonna, uh, withhold mine until later.
Okay. Um, I just have a question about the min, the hundred and twenty-four. Are, are they counting the outside seating as the hundred and twenty-four? Are they allowed to count the outside seating as the hundred and twenty-four? I guess is my question.
Yes, that's the total number. That's between indoors and outdoors.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
I, it can be a slow question.
Okay.
So, because I'm, I'm reasonably familiar with the term warrant, but we have several new members here, could you delve into and explain exactly what the warrant is, what the warrant request is, and the implications of that for this application?
Sure. So warrant is probably another term for maybe a variance, maybe, um, but it doesn't necessarily have the criteria attached to it like a typical variance. So a warrant is deviation from what is in the, in the code. So right now, how the code is strictly written is in the T four B district, you cannot have more than forty-nine seats in your retail establishment. But the Smart Code has an allowance that you can ask special approval to deviate. Um, so what they're requesting is to allow increased seating, um, to go up to one hundred and twenty-four. So looking, we did an analysis looking at the surrounding area, the impacts of having increased seating, um, and our determination to recommend approval of the warrant.
Okay. That's a great answer, thank you.
Sure.
So, as I understand, this application has a warrant request for two issues. Not just the, you used the word deviation, I think that's polite, the vast increase in seating nearly two times, three times? Three times the seating that would be allowed under this district? And the fact that the front door is not going to be used, we're going to hope it's going to stay there, and they're going to use a side door now. Would that be correct?
So the requi, so in this particular district in this situation, the code does not require the main entry at the street en, or the street, uh, the street frontage. It encourages. Um, so that's why we looked at it and has recommendations to widen the walkway, have potentially the connection to the, um, to the parking lot to kind of meet that overall intent and to get that encouragement, but it's not a requirement. So there's only one warrant request, which is the seating.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And then last but not least, um, I think your thoughts are correct in the fact that the access sidewalk is insufficient. Going to four feet would be right, but I would suggest, this isn't the question necessarily, is that obviously we have the ADA implications of that. And then therefore, it appears when there's some comment, this is going to take a minute, is that there aren't going to be any exterior modifications? Well, that's not necessarily completely true, maybe just maybe to the structure, but not only does the sidewalk need to be widened, but the proper curb cut and ADA access, which isn't reflected here. There's not a site plan they're probably trying to get through without a building permit. But I think one leads right to the other, is that if they are going to move the front door to the side door, it needs to be complete clarity, and it needs to be an ADA access, front door, curb cut, sidewalk, parking, X, Y, Z. Maybe that's already included. If it's not, it should be.
Okay.
I don't think so. This is not a site plan change. We're not going to see this again.
Yeah, it's not, this wouldn't, at this level was proposed. It's not, wouldn't require a site plan, even with the, um, addition of a sidewalk or widening the, the walkway. That's all building permit level. Um, but we can add clarifying language to the condition regarding those walkway, um, the walkway widening and everything. We can add, um, clarifying information and language for ADA compliance. Just to reinforce that.
Yes. Thank you for that answer, and not necessarily, and she has a question.
Sorry.
Okay, we'll go back, I checked.
For Lori, yeah.
Um.
Before I go to this side, I'll start back.
Thanks. You don't go back.
So the only, I, you know, I, I like this idea, but the only, I'm trying to understand, this is pre-permit phase. They will be seeking permits for certain things. At that point, they'll be reviewed. It's a very small kitchen to crank out a hundred and twenty-four, um, meals, so I'm just wondering at what, you know, how much further they're planning to go with the, with the site. That, that's really all.
Okay. I will just clarify that this is not necessarily a two-scale plan. But, but yes, they'll have to go through a permitting, you know, upon approval, um, they would have to go to permitting to make sure that they're compliant with all building codes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Yes.
I had a question that's not been yet addressed, only because I'm a morning person. I can hear. Maybe they'll address it with hours of, with her hours of operation. So will I have that question? I don't know if twelve AM is a normal hour or, I mean.
Yeah, I'll, I'll defer to the, to the admin property owner.
And the other thing about the kitchen, I mean, that was, well, I was at the TRC, and they'll address that later, because they have a limited menu. They're not doing a full-scale kitchen, from what I remember. So, but anyway, that's all.
I, I, I don't want to bring it up, but I don't think it's our purview to make that determination, what size kitchen they should or should not have.
I agree.
That falls under the purview of.
They'll explain it.
So, okay. All right.
Uh, thank you, Ally, for a great presentation, as usual. Uh, I just have two quick questions. There were no mention at all, uh, even the lack of the requirement of any additional parking for the increased occupancy there. Is that due to the zoning as the transect district not requiring anything?
Right.
To change?
Correct, yes, and because it's technically kind of adaptive reuse, there's some allowances within it, correct?
Yeah, and I, I know the adjacent lot just to the south would be at eight. I think there's a private property lot on the other side of the street that maybe the owner could discuss with that owner if they, uh, if they have some need at some point. The, uh, the Lemon Street door, uh, that's going to remain operational, would that be for emergency egress in case?
You're taking away the questions.
Not in, but out type.
Yeah, yeah, it still would be an accessible door, and that was one, another thing that we wanted to reiterate in our condition, is we want it to be operational. Um, and I think it would have to be that way regardless for fire access.
Right, true, yeah, operational and unobstructed, so, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, um, before I go back around, for a person who's seen the inside of that jail a few times when I was young, uh, I have no questions.
I do.
Okay, so we're going to go back.
That's the door left.
Yeah. I, I date myself, and, and the way I was when I was young. So we're going to go back, uh, this way. So, anybody have any follow-up questions?
I guess the only thing is, um, on a future, on another project, we added safety, uh, parking rails that separated the parking lot from the outdoor seating. Um, not to mention the sidewalk that was coming. If you look at that photo, that white truck right below the orange line.
Oh, this one, yeah.
Will that be allowed to be a parking spot? If so, just maybe a barricade that, I don't know. It's, it is a bar. Some type of barricade that separates the parking lot from the outdoor seating. I'd kind of like to see that.
Okay, just so for orientation purposes too, this is kind of the area where they have the proposed seating, is back in this realm, but just so you have orientation. Yes.
Okay. Skip? All right, your turn.
My original question has been answered, however. I just wanted to follow up, pardon me, on what you were saying. It seems to be sadly, I'm trying to orient myself to the photograph, but it seems that his comment or question, uh, that that seating area be protected is a good one. Um, but I, you are, you are the best judge. I mean, you've been there and, and you've discussed and seen where it's going to be placed. But that would be my only concern, is that the outdoor seating was protected somehow, even if it's just a berm or a.
I, I think it's on the grassy area.
Ballard. Oh, I didn't know that's what they.
I think how we did that in the past was, um, an outdoor seating area that was adjacent to parking spaces, had a ballard or some sort of protective measure. I think we just need, instead of just outdoor seating being protected, I think we have to give some sort of context. So if there, if there are parking spaces adjacent to where the seating is, then there has to be a protective measure, um, so we can add that condition. If that's something that the board chooses to add to the recommendation, then we can put that in there. But just so there's a little bit more direction. Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
No questions.
Thank you.
Um, there's no questions, uh, I don't think anybody has any questions. Is the applicant here? Does the applicant want to make a presentation, uh, or have any comment with regard to any of the concerns that have been addressed by the?
Or have any comment with regard to any of the concerns that have been addressed by the PNC?
So good evening. My name is Benjamin Spiegel. I am the owner of 325 East Lemon Street. I just want to clarify one point for the record. The original applicant who submitted the narrative and business plan is no longer moving forward with his individual concept. However, the intended use for the space remains exactly the same as the staff has reviewed. A bar tavern restaurant style operation using the same general square footage and a similar layout and intensity and activity level. I personally fell in love with the historical charm of the building when it was former Silver King. And I intend to keep the historical character alive and to keep with a, with a bar tavern kind of concept. At this stage, my goal is to simply, is to secure the appropriate conditional use approval for the property so the space can be activated with the use that aligns with the city's plan for the downtown gateway area. Then I appreciate the staff's work on this application and the recommendation for approval. I'm happy to answer any questions from the board.
Okay, we're going to start on this side next. Any questions of the applicant?
Yes. Okay, so I looked at the hours and it said typically 12:00 AM. I think that was every night. Is that a normal timeframe down in that area?
In that area, I think 12:00 AM is probably usually when places start to close.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the second one, if you want to clear for the kitchen use.
Correct. So with, with his proposed plan, the kitchen use was mostly for kind of more confection ovens, like pizza ovens, sandwiches, stuff like that to kind of feed a bar tavern style atmosphere.
Thank you.
All right.
No questions. I just thank you for revitalizing what is a vacant building and keeping its character and keeping pretty much a similar use in the area. I used to also partake in the drinking establishment there. That's where I used to start my first Fridays all the time and then worked my way in. So it was missed and actually after it closed, I used to park there because the spots were all open and little by little the word got out. So I wish you luck.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much.
Hey, Benjamin, I'm excited for your idea. I'm going to definitely come check it out. I just want to make sure that the concerns addressed, that you haven't kind of covered them. But I guess we could make that continuation, but I'm just making sure that you've heard the concerns and that, see what you say about that is all.
Yep, so I've heard the concerns regarding obviously the parking and the front door entry use. Honestly, with, it was, the original applicant's plan was to not make the front door entry the main entry. Again, he is no longer part of this, this project. I particularly love that front entry and I would personally like to keep it there. So that kind of solves some of the issues with that. Granted, I'm still in talks currently with prospective tenants, so to figure out the full plan.
Yeah, good luck with this project. I live nearby, so I would certainly enjoy seeing something there. Is it your intent to have live music at this location?
I believe there is a possibility of some kind of live music. Mostly, I would assume indoors, something on the small acoustic level. Nothing, no large bands or anything outside.
Okay, that's it.
No, Mr. Vessi? I have a question for staff, not so much Mr. Spiegel. I've got to admit, I'm thrown for a loop here because we just had the owner not, and he is on the application, say, hey, kind of deals off. It's changed what we were doing is not it. I'm a little bit of a lost, no, I'm supportive. It's a neat thing, right? But something doesn't add up here. We're, we're being asked to approve a warrant for something he just says he doesn't really maybe want or need. I'm not going to use your word, not to put you on the spot, but I'm kind of at a loss why we're actually doing what we're doing because the applicant just said, hey, I'm really not going to do that. May, if I may, could you answer that?
Just for, so conditional use is tied to a property, not a specific business necessarily. So say the original applicant came through and got approval for this request and then a month later says, hey, Benjamin, I'm not going to do this. He still has a conditional use in place. As long as they operate within the confines of the approved conditional use, they can do that. So you're really looking at the concept of a restaurant tavern at this location that has up to 124 seats. And does that make sense at this location? Not necessarily, we'll say, the Rusty Key Tavern that was specifically proposed by this one specific person.
Agreed. And if I may continue since you answered and you're listening, except that we just told him he's got to put a four-foot sidewalk and a curb cut ADA. That could cost him 10 grand. He might not even use that. But as I understand it, as part of the warrant, he would be required to install that for the conditional use.
So that, so the installation, the improvements for that is tied to interior modifications for the restaurant with the building permit. How it is written as a condition, it talks about the proposed main entrance as the west side entry. So I would say that the widening of the sidewalk and that connection really is tied to the side entry being the main entrance. So if that's not being used as the main entry, I guess there could be argued that they wouldn't have to do that. I may have.
But, but we can't be wishy-washy. We got to say either it is or either it isn't. I'm, I'm just trying to be helpful here because it's kind of a serious topic. It's not a casual, like maybe we will, maybe we won't.
Right.
You can attach it as a condition if the, wherever the entrance is, if that's what's important, you can attach it to that, that location.
Fair enough. Trying to save you a whole bunch of cash and a bunch of work that you don't need to do. Because a warrant's a warrant. It says it shall be.
Appreciate it.
So I have a question. If I could, if I could jump into, I will say though, from staff's perspective, the connection to the city parking lot is fairly important. We think that that is, that really plays out what the special area plan is, you know, intending to accomplish. Potentially the widening of the two-and-a-half foot sidewalk is maybe more tied to that main entry. But providing some sort of connection to the sidewalk to the city parking lot, we feel is very important. But up to the board, whether you want to have that condition tied to regardless of where the main entrance is located, you can, we can amend the condition to be, you know, to just be, that has to be done regardless.
I understand everything that you just said, and I think that I would support that in the emphasis on that the owner, as earnest as he is, might just be passing through just like the previous partner was. But adherence to the district and trying to be true to the intent long-term arguably is more important. So however you might choose to structure the end result so that we follow that, I would be supportive of that. Okay, my turn. As, when you hear, when I hear the word warrant and I think of a jail, I just.
Poor choice of words.
It used to be a jail, right?
Yeah, trust me, I know. So, so the fact is, what I think the applicant is, what you're doing here is you're trying to get permission to do it and you may find a tenant or to fill in that space for a restaurant. Whether you, I'm not thinking you're going to run the restaurant, but probably getting an investor to buy or, or put in a restaurant. That being said, any person coming in may design the interior the way they feel they need to design the interior. So leaving those requirements in as a conditional use regardless gives the flexibility or the requirement that whoever's coming in will have to do that. So I, I think that's, and I may correct you if I'm wrong, but that's kind of what your, your business plan is, correct?
Yeah, my, my goal at this point is to get the.
Get the okay and then find somebody to fill it.
Get it, find a tenant and at least make it easy for them. It makes them much more assured to come to the space, yes.
Okay. All right. So that being said, are you?
I have a simple question then. So it isn't necessarily going to be a Celtic restaurant. That's how it was first.
That's how it was originally, that's how it was originally framed. It may or may not be.
Yep. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there, anybody else have any questions before I go to any public comment? I don't see any public comment. Has there anybody responded to the applicant either a mail or an email or?
No.
Okay. So that being said, I'm going to go ahead and close the, the presentation. And did you have something else you wanted to add?
Yes, I just wanted to give a suggestion to the board if you wanted to revise that second condition to just be applicable no matter, regardless of the entry.
I, I think that's what's going to, I think that's what the motion's going to be.
Okay.
And I, and I think what the motion may include, whoever's going to make it is that there be some type of barrier. You know, whether it's a planter, one of those cement planters, or some type of barrier to the, to the outdoor seating as a requirement or as a condition.
What we would recommend is just removing and proposed main entrance west side entry. So we'd just say the walkway connecting the Lemon Street public sidewalk shall be widened to the minimum four feet and extended to connect to the existing pedestrian walkway leading to the city parking lot, on and on. So we would just remove that specific reference to the entryway. And that would achieve, just getting those connections that we feel are.
But aren't they required for a second exit? Is there a second?
There's still be a door there. It just, it just takes away that tie in that condition to the specific main entrance.
Okay.
And the, you know, lack of clarity.
If you're going to adopt the conditions, then you would, it sounds like the board would add a fifth one, which is the one that you discussed, Chair.
Yeah.
I, I need a little bit more clarification from Ms. Keen.
Okay.
Having read it more carefully and tried to listen more carefully, do I understand that the sidewalk shall be continuous from this existing city parking lot and the sidewalk extensions that there? And then it shall be continuous to the new four-foot that runs in front of the building and then exit out on Lemon Street? Is that what I hear?
Essentially, it will be continuous. It may not be a complete straight line, how it lays out.
To connect to the existing pedestrian parkway. So in other words, someone could walk on that sidewalk, and I didn't see this before because there's not a site plan, there's just a floor plan. There's not enough there really. Is that they could take a left on Lemon, walk by the west entrance that may or may not be being used and continue to the sidewalk?
Correct. Yeah, so essentially kind of we follow these lines from Lemon Street, someone could walk all the way through here. So that's why he says, you know, beneficial not only through the site, but for people going from downtown to get to the property and vice versa.
I missed the whole dotted line thing before. I'm real slow. It takes me a long time to get there.
You're doing great.
Thank you for sticking to that because that is, that is really nice.
And like I said, it may not be, you know, exactly this layout, but we can work with the applicant and the future tenant when necessary.
And are you cool with that?
I mean, if the entrance, the existing entrance remains the same as the one that's on Lemon Street, I would prefer not to have a connecting sidewalk through that direction if the side entrance is not in use.
So I'm glad that I asked because that's not what's being proposed here. Because staff in the city wants you to put that in as part of getting the more seats. I just want to help because I think that there's a miss there. So you're kind of tied to this. No matter what happens, you can just start planning for it now. I tried to save you the money, but dude, she just spent it.
Yeah, the ancillary parking is equally important. So we want people to be able to come and patronize the establishment to have availability.
Even, even the, that sidewalk kind of goes through, essentially called a parking lot, not all of it's used. That, that walkway that's considered the parking lot would not be applicable for, for, to connect it?
So, so for, for example, like parts that are, say there's paved parking lot area, ways that you can delineate it for pedestrians by paint, striping that. So it delineates a pedestrian walkway, areas that are in the grass area that would have, you know, an actual walkway. There's a good portion that's already in right here on the property. But we can, when the time comes, we can work with you on how to do that. And like I said, maybe your future tenant.
Let me, let me suggest this. And one of the reasons I think that four-foot is, is important, regardless of where you put the entrance, if somebody's going to access your property from the city parking lot and, and they are, they are handicapped, you're going to want the four-foot sidewalk anyways. So that's just my, my thought, and that's why I think it's, it's important regardless of where the entrance may be. So I want to go ahead and, and I think there's more of this board discussion.
Question.
Okay.
Okay, I, I, I'm not able to picture it totally, but if he installs the sidewalk, if he takes, which apparently he needs to do, does that is no longer a city sidewalk? If he's putting that sidewalk down, do we need to work? No? Okay. All right. The chief knows what I was going to ask, and he was shaking his head. I was just worried about this man's liability.
Okay. Okay. All right, I'm going to go ahead and close the, the comment and, and turn the matter over to this board before we start a discussion.
I don't think we opened it up to the public yet.
I think we did. I asked if there was any.
Did we? Okay, sorry.
I did.
I missed that.
Okay. I, first, for discussion purposes, like to hear a motion. And if whoever's going to make the motion, if they would think about including the additional requirement. I'm not telling you what to do, but, but that's. Chair, could, for everyone's understanding, what is the suggested additional condition? That there'd be, there'd be some, some type of a structure prohibitive between the eating, the exterior dining area? Some protective, whether it's a planter or something to designate or separate the outdoor seating from, from parking or from vehicle, vehicles, cars.
Vehicle traffic.
Vehicle traffic.
Did we establish that there is parking next, adjacent to the?
Well, there's, there's a little bit of parking. If you looked at the, the area, there's some, a little bit of parking along the side. And that's just a barrier. I was thinking a little barrier, some structural barrier between the outdoor seating. That was, that was.
Is that the, is that the case or was there just, in that, in that photo, just a vehicle parked there randomly? Is that actually going to be utilized for parking?
So as far as associated with the proposed restaurant, they're proposing to put seating at this time, potentially in the rear of the building. I would say they formalized seating in the rear of the building and that formalized area is adjacent to parking. A barrier of some sort needs to be in place. We, once we have more information at the building permit stage, we can implement that condition. We always look back to the conditions when we're looking at the permit, so we can put that in place.
Because the reason I ask is there, there's a difference between vehicles that may be traveling, you know, laterally with a seating area as opposed to pulling up perpendicular to a seating area. Perpendicular is obviously more dangerous. So how is the traffic pattern being utilized there? Is it, is it that vehicles are going alongside a seating area?
The parking lot does not go all the way through. It kind of ends basically to parking, they park on either side. I don't know if you can see my arrow kind of, it parks along this side. This vehicle, I think is, I think there's a home right here and this might be that personal vehicle for that home. That's my assumption. But the parking spaces for these establishments are on either side of this drive aisle.
Perpendicular to the building?
Yeah, a little angle.
Okay, all right. So there was a, so I didn't hear a motion yet.
Okay, I would make that motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve Resolution 2025-62 for conditional use 25-69, including the warrant for additional seating and including the original four staff recommendation points to be determined by the final placement of the main entrance and also include the parking barrier for any. Yeah, any area that's used vehiculally and any area that's used for outdoor seating.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Now any discussion on the motion before a roll call? Okay, I don't see any hands, so roll call, please.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Weber?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Swenson?
Yes.
Ms. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Rockline?
Yes.
Vice Chair Vessi?
Yes.
Chairperson Coast Codis?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if you look on your, uh, agenda, uh, item B is gonna be deferred, so out to item C with this again, another quasi judicial ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eighteen amending the official zoning atlas for the property located at four seventy-five North Highland from agricultural to residential plan development.
Good evening, Pat McNeese, planning supervisor. So, uh, what you have before you is a proposed rezoning for property located at four seventy-five North Highland Avenue. Um, this is about five hundred feet north of Keystone Road on the east side of the road of Highland Avenue. The future land use is residential very low and preservation. Uh, the current zone, it's currently under two zonings, agricultural and residential plan development, and proposed is to make it all agricultural. Uh, the property is seven point seven two acres in size, more than half of which is wetlands. Um, it was originally part of that, uh, McAlpin property off of Keystone Road, and it's been subject to agricultural activities over the years. Uh, the applicant is also processing a minor site plan, uh, to, um, divide the parcel into, uh, with the, working with the TRC on. So this is the, look, the site location of the parcel. Uh, as you can see, it's got two, um, zonings on it. The future land use is residential very low and, um, preservation, because there are wetlands on the property, so that's what the preservation covers. The zonings are RPD and agricultural. You processed a rezoning for adjacent property, uh, the same thing, they, to, um, basically remove that RPD designation. Uh, this area, uh, was, um, in approved RPD from, I guess, several years ago. It was never built. Pinellas County bought a large portion of it to use for storm water handling for the Keystone Road, um, upgrade. So this is leftover from that. This just gives you an idea using the countywide map, um, what the zonings and future land use in the area looks like. Basically, um, east of nineteen, mostly up off of Keystone Road, you're looking at, um, rural and estate type zoning and future land use. This is our, um, twenty forty-five comprehensive, uh, place-based area map. Same idea. This property is in agricultural, residential, estate, um, place-based area. Both the county and the city comprehensive plans, both of which have a planning horizon in twenty forty-five. At least through that horizons, uh, see this area as staying low-density estate-type, uh, parcels, um, limited agricultural, which you can do in Pinellas County anyway. Uh, you've got veterinarian, uh, some dog breeding, hor- limited horses, you know, the activities like that up in this area. This is a survey of the parcel. Um, I didn't really mark it, but a large portion right along here, east of that is wetlands, um, the, the uplands, um, fortunately for them, border the road, so they will be able to, that will make it easier for them to, um, split this into two parcels and build, uh, single family. Um, there are eight units allocated density-wise because they have almost eight acres. Um, but the change to agricultural will limit them to single-family detached dwelling product. And the lot sizes and dimensions are, are very, uh, conservative, so they're really limited. Um, really, the two, uh, lots that they're proposing is probably the, the best practical use. So, uh, the agricultural zoning is consistent with the plan and place-based area map. And, um, the, the uses are compatible with the, uh, surrounding area. As I mentioned, we're looking at single-family detached dwelling for the residential. Um, this is consistent with both the city and the county long-term growth patterns for this area. We serve the prop- the property right now with fire emergency and law enforcement services. We can serve it with solid waste. The, um, utilities and roadway are, um, provided of, by Pinellas County. So staff is recommending approval of this rezoning from, uh, two districts, agricultural, agricultural and RPD to all one district agricultural. And there were no responses to the public notices. Do you have any questions on this one?
We'll start on this end this time.
I, I, my question is, I think it's great, but why, why would they want to do this? Because they want more agricultural? I mean, what's the objective?
Uh, the objective is to remove the RPD zoning.
Yes.
Uh, so that they can go forward with the low level, estate level, um, residential under agricultural.
So they cannot go forward with the low density, it, with the way it is zoned right now?
No, there's two zonings on it, and if they left the RPD on there.
Higher density.
Okay.
It, well, wouldn't necessarily do higher density, but you'd have to, you'd have to come in with a plan development, which is not, um, not what's, uh, appropriate for this property, basically.
Because there's significant wetlands too, so how, how would they?
And under the, as you all know, under the new comprehensive plan, uh, we really have prohibited, pretty much prohibited, well, and, uh, impacts.
Okay. Thank you. That's it. Okay.
No questions, thank you.
No. No question.
If we approve this, will this be the last time that we look at this parcel? Because we could've spent more time staring at Highland Avenue. I'm trying to put some levity in there. I actually understand exactly what's going on there, but maybe this is the end of this project here.
There's a few of those.
It's written.
Is this you?
Uh, I would say that the rezoning's pretty much done after this. Um, I don't see any move by the county to rezone their bond, and my guess is they don't care to do it. They already built the pond.
You know, it's, it's, any other questions, Mr. Vessi?
No.
Okay, it's not too often we see somebody who kinda, I won't call it downzone.
Yeah.
Okay, and, and it, and it's, it's actually refreshing to, to not see everybody trying to pack a lot of homes in a small area. So I have no questions. Uh, I don't know if the applicant is here, if the applicant has anything to add. Um...
I'll keep it brief. For the record, I'm Pete Pensum, an AICP certified planner with Abbott McAdams, where the land planners, surveyors, engineers for the project. Uh, we concur with staff's findings and recommendation, uh, for the rezoning. Uh, quite simply put, it's a cleanup. Uh, it's got split zoning on it. The RPD, as staff had pointed out, was never developed. The property owner, Patrick Fantasia's sole purpose for this is to do a lot split and build two single-family homes. And we met with the city about doing that, and the zoning came up as a, uh, item that we need, that we needed to clean up in order to do that. We have an application for minor site plan, which is the preliminary plating process for that lot split is already in review. DRC reviewed that concurrently with the, with the rezoning. And we're, uh, updating the couple items that they had in the survey and the minor site plan to address the comments that they had, and will be submitting. And then he just wants to go forward with a building permit and build two houses.
Thank you.
And, uh, and also a question came up about the wetlands. Uh, there's no intention of impacting the wetlands. We, uh, I know you don't have the minor site plan as part of your application, but essentially, we're the two words, uh, Lot One and Lot Two and the acreages. Those two areas where those labels are, is where the developable areas. There are, um, two and a half and three quarters of an acre of developable area. There's significant, uh, utility easements all over this property as well as the wetlands. And then, of course, you got the wetland buffer from there as well. So on the minor site plan, it shows where the developable area is, uh, that's on the property. It's actually pulled back off the road because Duke Energy and others have easements along the road frontage. And so, that's it, unless you have any additional questions for me.
All right. Any questions? The applicant, okay. Um, any public comment, any, uh, phone calls, emails?
No.
Okay. Um, all right, then I'm gonna close the, the presentation at this point and turn it over to this board. Um, is there, first, before we have a discussion, I'd like to hear a motion. Does somebody wanna make a motion?
Chair, I motioned that we pass a submit, submitted ordinance twenty-five, twenty twenty-five dash eighteen.
Okay, is there a second? All right, we got a couple seconds. Okay, any discussion? No? Okay, roll, roll call.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Swenson?
Yes.
Ms. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Rockline?
Yes.
Vice Chair Vessi?
Yes.
Chairperson?
Yes. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Look, okay, on to our last item on the agenda, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash sixty-five, which is also quasi judicial, site plan approval for the construction of a thirteen thousand square foot medical and general office building at ten ninety-eight South Pinellas Avenue. Is the applicant here? Okay, say your presentation, please.
This is for the shops at Mears', uh, site plan approval. Again, this is at ten ninety-eight South Pinellas Avenue. Uh, the property consists of one point eight three acres, um, in size. Uh, one point two of that is wetlands, uh, and submerged land. This is, um, in the T five A South Pinellas Avenue transect district and the South Gateway Character District of the special area plan. What's proposed is a little over thirteen thousand square feet of gross floor area for a medical and general office building. There were, uh, any applicant, Mr. Alzaba is here, uh, to talk about this application. There were two previous approvals on this site. Your staff report outlines that, uh, the project was never constructed either time. Those were in twenty-ten and twenty-twenty. So this is the location of the site. I did add the transit stop-up here, uh, which I will talk about later. We can go back to that if needed. It's again at the north, uh, northwest corner of, uh, Mears Boulevard and Alt Nineteen, really kind of at the dead end of that, uh, south canal. This is just an oblique aerial of the site and the context around. Again, this is in the T five A South Pinellas Ave transect. Uh, the blue dashed line outlines the South Gateway Character District. So this is in your form-based code, and this would be really the first building in that character district that would be built to, uh, the standards called for in the form, form-based, uh, code. This just shows a survey of the property. Uh, yellow is the property line, and the green just shows the wetland jurisdiction line. Uh, the area west of the line is the wetland area. And this shows the demolition plan, um, to impact, uh, point ninety-eight acres of the wetland to, um, prepare the site. And then there will be a, uh, walled, uh, drainage pond facility on the west, along the west side. And, uh, outside of that would be, uh, the remaining submerged land. This is, uh, a depiction of the site plan. So you've got the office building right up, um, almost, well, ten feet from the property line, so right up along, uh, the roadway. Um, parking behind, we have an access in front as required by code, as well as access from the rear for, uh, the patrons. Um, the applicant's proposing, uh, parking, uh, to the north and, and west, um, with a total of seventy spaces. Um, and, uh, sixteen of those will be, uh, pervious pavement. In the back, we have the walled drainage facility, which will also be bordered by riprap because the, um, the, uh, bottom of the wall there will be, uh, submerged, basically, and the riprap is to provide some, uh, habitat along that, really, that basically dredged canal that's there. Couple other features, I'll talk about, um, this as far as some of the review criteria. Uh, we did ask the applicant to reduce the parking, uh, the required parking per, uh, smart code is thirty-nine spaces. As you know, parking requirements in smart code are reduced from what your Euclidean zone requires. Because of the use, um, it'd be in a medical office building, uh, the applicant really felt like they needed more parking. Um, they proposed seventy-five, then they reduced it to seventy, added the pervious pavement, and added additional landscaping. So, um, uh, that is something that, that just wanted to let you know we kinda went through. Another site feature, uh, the access is from Apricot Court, and, um, the applicant did request an access to Mears Boulevard. That is a county road. Uh, the county did deny that access at this point. And he can talk about that if you have any questions about that. So we just have the access off Apricot Court. Um, this is just, uh, the depiction of where the landscaping, uh, is proposed. The applicant's proposing a street wall to achieve the eighty percent build-out on South Pinellas. But, um, there's no street wall proposed on Mears Boulevard, and a warrant is requested to allow a hedgerow to act as the street wall. Staff feels that this, this could be supported. Um, we feel like really the main, um, uh, non-vehicular travel is, is, there is a lot on Mears, but for this building is really gonna be on Alt Nineteen. Uh, so we felt like that warrant was supportable. It's just a depiction of the building elevation. Um, it's obviously gonna have a corner feature, um, in this gateway area. Uh, the wetland mitigation, I'll talk about that for a minute. So the wetland impacts were permitted by state and federal agencies. The state permit with the Southwest Florida Water Management District is still in effect. Um, I've got, it's in your staff report when it expires, but it's a couple years. I think I can look that up if needed. The core permit already did expire. Um, and the, um, Pinellas County Water and Navigation Authority has asked that the applicant, uh, apply for a dredge and fill permit. Meanwhile, the mitigation for the wetland impacts was completed in twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen. It's, it's been monitored ever since. It was done up at the North Anklot River Nature Park. That's a city park. Um, and again, finished in twenty-fifteen. This is just a construction, depiction of the construction, uh, document for that, uh, wetland mitigation, and the full document's in your packet. These are pictures I took the other day. Um, I put the latest monitoring report in your packet from August of this year. That is the seventh and final report, reporting, uh, successful, um, recovery and meeting the goals, actually exceeding the goals of the mitigation for this wetland, uh, restoration that was done. It was not. So really, all he, all the applicant needs to do is renew that core permit and, you know, document the mitigation that was done, that was originally approved by the core. And then with the county, the county required city approval or city status before they would process their permit. So it was kind of a chicken and egg thing. So they are awaiting city approval of the project before they process the applicant's request. This application came in in 2023, prior to the adoption of your 2045 comprehensive plan. So it's being reviewed under the previous plan. In that case, if you all remember, you were allowed to impact wetlands, then you had to show by three choices. You had to show, either prove why you couldn't pick the choices in order or, you know, what you were going to do. The first choice was to mitigate on-site. That wasn't possible for this site. The second choice was to mitigate inside the city limits and planning area. That was actually done for this project. The third choice is to mitigate off-site or pay into a mitigation bank. But the applicant was able to mitigate inside the city. So we asked for the reduction in parking because of the heat island effect or the heat severity effect, which is really more of a policy direction, or it is a policy direction in your new comprehensive plan. It's not in the old plan. The applicant did do a reduction. So that was just something that we kind of went back and forth and talked through with the applicant. Already gave you the spaces and the warrant. This project would technically require a transportation management plan because it proposes 51 peak hours of vehicular trips. When you hit 51 or above, you're supposed to do a transportation management plan. Usually that's bicycle racks, which this project has, and other ways of non-vehicular transportation. Sometimes people can do a bus stop or other means. As you can see, we do have a transit stop less than 300 feet from the site. We felt like this site has already been mitigated for, especially for that low level, 51 new So we did not ask for a separate TMP. This is just a picture of the heat severity map in your new comprehensive plan. And as you can expect, you know, you're mild to moderate. Heat is, is along some of the commercial corridors and we're just looking to, you know, minimize how much more is added. The property can, the project can meet the concurrency management requirements and meet the levels of service. It's expected to meet city building codes. The applicant has proposed multi-tenant floodproofing. And this isn't really preferred by staff because of the documents agreements and, and action plans that have to be implemented ahead of a storm. But it is allowable, FEMA allows this, so the city has to allow it. So we would just, we have just recommended a condition that this paperwork be submitted with the building permit application and all that documentation is, is completed. This went through five rounds of review at TRC and the last review was on May 1st. Some, there's a couple of conditions that help resolve TRC comments. And so staff is recommending approval of all conditions. I can read those if you want, but they are in your staff report. This is just a summary. So there would be one warrant to allow the planted hedge row along Mears Boulevard frontage. And then staff feels that the, the applicant should pull the site construction and vertical building permits within six months of the approval. As you know, the code, we had a code change there a couple of years ago. There used to be one year for an applicant to apply for a building permit. The code was changed to six months to obtain a building permit. So we wanted to reiterate that. And that's what that condition is about. Dry floodproofing, we're asking for the documentation upfront with the building permit to the satisfaction of the floodplain administrator before the permit's issued. All other jurisdictional permits, so we did supply, so, so he does have a receipt from the county and the core for his applications. Knowing the core and not really knowing the county, there, there will be a time lapse for, for pulling that permit, some processing time. But we are, we would like to require those with the application for building permit. Looking for vertical clearance on the landscape material for DOT standards on Alt 19 and county standards on Mears Boulevard. The driveway access point is restricted to 24 feet near smart code, so that needs to be reduced a little bit. And there's a number of things for utilities, just that it's master metered and some other conditions that need to be on the approval so that the, the applicant gets notice of that. So this application appeared on the agenda. That is the public notice for this application. We have not received any, any contact or anything from citizens or the public. And staff is recommending approval of this resolution. Are there any questions?
Just for clarification, when you said six months to secure a permit, you mean to apply for a permit? Because the permit could take many months to secure. You're talking about applicating, application for a permit within six months?
We're talking about pulling both the site construction, which is the site preparation permit, and the vertical permit within six months. The code allows the applicant to ask the board for a phasing plan or more time. I didn't receive a written request by today from the applicant that he can, he can address.
I thought we said that they had to apply within the window, not because applying and securing could take revisions back and forth, could take a long time and it may not be the fault of the applicant. I thought that's what we did, that they had to apply.
Yeah, I can, that, that first line of that code is section 21005A. Approval of a site plan shall expire in six months from the date of original approval unless a construction permit or building permit is obtained and kept active, except that the Board of Commissioners may approve an alternate phasing plan at the time of site plan approval.
Okay, thanks for the, thanks for the clarification.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll start on.
Oh, you're going to start with me?
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions here. First of all, who did the letters go to to find out if people were concerned at all?
There were no letters. This is a site plan for a used by right. It was, it was on the Planning and Zoning Board Agenda, which was posted last Monday.
Because I would only really like to know what the people in the mirror, in the condos over there would think, because I have a couple of questions. One, we know that they need that dry flooding proofing because they're not going to adhere to the elevation that they were really recommended to hold there.
That's correct.
That's correct. And that's a concern to me, but they've done, and I can ask him some more questions after. I really don't agree that we don't need a traffic study. There are so many accidents on Pinellas Avenue South by mirrors, and I know that we're exiting it at Apricot, but that's not too far. And, and to say that the transit stop and bike rack and even maybe the bus stop, I mean, people downtown Tarpon don't even want to walk two blocks, provides sufficient means to obviate the need for TMP. That is, that is, yeah, troubling. The other, I, I really would probably want to ask him more questions because I'm really concerned with the water drainage and the impact on those canals. Because the people that live on MLK and in those mirrors condos, if you have just a high tide, the water is flowing over their seawall. And we know for people that live around there, that bridge is so low to begin with that if you're going to impact that water and that water level gets higher, you know, that, that's a much concern. And I did read about your soil studies and in fact, you only, I believe, had two, two spots that you tested at the time and you have to do additional soil studies and I could talk to you about that later. But I, I definitely, as an engineer, have a little bit of concerns with this, but thank you.
Okay.
No questions at this time, sure.
Just to clarify, this is only approval to move forward with the building plan? Nothing? Or is this?
Doesn't.
I'm sorry, I, I guess I just don't know. Is this, if we approve this, are they good to start the building?
Well, you're obviously recommending to the Board of Commissioners. Once the Board of Commissioners approves it, they can come in and apply for their building permits, yes.
Okay. And with the building permits, if it gets to that stage, like, I just know there's the electrical lines on that corner, there's, those are, would the building permits state the, the removal of all those or like, how, I guess, just how would that work? Because I, I just, I drive that corner every day and there's, there's electrical lines like on that. I'm assuming you wouldn't have electrical lines right by the building. I'm just trying to learn here if we're approving, like, what this building looks like or like the process of it, if you can.
I mean, we, you know, there's, there's signage there, there's electric poles. I don't know that we got, and those would all be in the right-of-way. So, and he's 10 feet back from the right-of-way. Not saying that nothing would need to be modified, but those kinds of details are usually done at the building permit. We, we generally review the site layout here and the details of, of site circulation and features and that. But to get into all of that extra, you know, frankly, building code details is, is just too much to ask of the applicant without knowing if a site plan, if they even have a site plan approval. So those details are usually worked out later. And again, that's all right-of-way infrastructure.
And then estimated like?
And the applicant may be able to answer about the electric lines.
Okay. And how high would they have to build up? Do you, six feet?
The, you mean the flood?
I mean, we're building.
Right elevation.
The parking lot is on top of wetland, like, so I'm just saying.
Yeah, so the parking lot's at about, and applicant again can address us if you look at your, the plan set, about seven foot above sea level. The site right now is, you know, anywhere from, anywhere from zero at the west end would just emerge to maybe two or so. So as we outlined in the staff report, we're looking at four to six feet of, of fill. And then the finished floor in a parking lot's probably six something, finished floor is going to be seven feet above sea level.
Would I anticipate a sidewalk followed by a retaining wall followed by the building? Would you, would that be?
The sidewalk on the, the Alt 19, you mean?
Well, like the street? I'm assuming I would see a retaining wall of some sort.
There'd be a sidewalk and then the wall of the building. And as you can see, the applicant's proposing stairs here to walk into the building onto the seven-foot finished floor.
And the height of the building?
The height, I can look that.
About three foot above existing?
Yeah, it looks like it's about 28 feet according to the elevation.
Correct. All right, thank you.
So the, the main entrance to the building is going to be off Apricot? Is that, or is it going to be off Pinellas?
The patrons can enter from the parking lot. The code requires the, the entrance on South Pinellas. I don't think we get to the point of enforcing that everybody go in that side. You can go in, obviously pedestrians and, and people with bicycles and, and things can, would go into that side. But it depends also on who the tenants are.
The architectural drawings would, would reflect some kind of main entrance appearance from the Pinellas side?
Yes, that's what this east elevation is.
Okay. That's all I have.
Forgive me, but I, I'm looking at the photograph on location and context from your staff presentation, the actual photograph. And I'm very familiar with this intersection as well. It's an extremely busy intersection, although you don't see that right now on the photograph. And I cannot wrap my head around, I guess my question is this, and I, I heard you say earlier that the parking was resolved somehow, but I look at that parking lot and its location and I'm concerned not only with the heat factor, but runoff from that facility's parking lot could be horrible. And that's a, that's a, what do you call the? The water.
Well.
I would, thank you, the canal. There's not a lot of movement. So any runoff is not going to be, you know, diluted and washed away. What I see is just a big problem with that corner. And I guess what I want to ask is, have they addressed anything on, along those lines?
Certainly they have proposed a whole, a full stormwater handling plan. They have a walled pond that's proposed. And our stormwater engineers have reviewed that, have reviewed that plan and it is in compliance. And I can't remember, we had another that was runoff and something else.
You may better qualify as saying retention. Where you, yeah.
Yeah, retention.
This, what she's talking about is actually retention.
Yeah, so that the pond will, is there. Yeah.
Okay, then.
If you pull up, if you just add, address the question, if you address the, there.
This is the.
See the blue? That's the retention.
Pond, the walled pond that will accept the, the drainage and.
Clear. It's a square retention pond.
Well, that fixes everything, right? Well, I don't, I'm just very concerned about the location.
Okay.
Ms. McBees, are you done?
I'm done, thank you.
You sure?
I'm, I'm sure.
Okay. I was hoping that you could repeat for everyone, because there is obviously some concern and maybe just a touch of misunderstanding is that it, it appears that they're about to pay for over a wetland, which is partially true. Except that there was a part of your presentation that I don't think was completely understood in regards to the mitigation that was done by the previous applicant that has moved forward with this application. That's how I understand that, is that previous application and a previous development site plan did a wetland mitigation project within the city of Tarpon Springs. Could you cover that again so we understand how?
Yes.
That wetland is being transferred somewhere else?
And I appreciate that. I, for those of us, which I understand, but there's some people may not understand how mitigation works. I think that's what you, so.
Well, no, I understand how it works.
No, I know you, some people may not.
I want to understand.
Okay. This is actually for Dura, is the, and when you look at the picture, it looks like a tidal wetland, but it's just really the end of a canal. And in a previous time, and I want to speak for staff, a previous applicant and perhaps owner made a huge effort to bank and to mitigate the covering of that. She covered that in that, but it was kind of hard to tell what was going on. She showed some pretty pictures.
Yeah.
Maybe if you could do that again for everyone, just to make sure that we understand what's been done in regards to this particular piece of project.
Thank you.
Sure. First of all, the applicant can correct me if I'm wrong when, when we hear from him, but I believe the. But I believe the applicant and owner have not changed. So this is the same applicant, um, requesting basically for a third time the approval of this project. So the applicant did perform mitigation. So, so this is the site, as you can see, there's, you know, I should have probably guessed made of where the property line is here. But you've got up front, and here's the uplands, where you see the little tree dots. That's the uplands, that's disturbed. I'll backtrack a little bit and say, when you look at historic aerials of this, this area, this was all dredged. The seawall stopped here. This was not stabilized up here in this area. And it began, I'm conjecturing now, it began to erode back in, and fill back in. It filled to a certain level, um, and, and grew mangroves. So all this greenery you see here is mangrove wetlands and, um, salt marsh grass is, it's a marine wetland, basically. And, and, um, real shallow submerged, uh, land. So the applicant proposed, there's 1.2 acres of that on his property of wetlands. And, uh, some of that, or most of that, is going to be, uh, filled in to bring the site up to, uh, an acceptable grade to, to build on. Okay? So when that happens, as we all know, you need permits to mitigate the, um, loss of the wetland benefits, both in area and function. That's how the agencies look at it. They have a score sheet. They look at the score of the area you're going to impact. Then they say, okay, you need to score that or higher on your mitigation site. And it needs to be basically light for light. Marine, uh, brackish marine wetlands for, um, the same type. So, um, that's what they did. They proposed a mitigation plan, um, to create wetlands. Basically, it was almost kind of a wetland restoration. If any of you knows a little bit of history about North Anglo Nature Park, it used to be a landfill, a big one, pretty big one. That was closed in like the seventies, maybe. Anyway, a lot of this stuff was, was dredged, so they scraped down a lot of that dirt, planted, uh, the area. And, uh, the mangroves are fairly, getting fairly large. This was, you know, 10 years ago now, so this mitigation is, is about 10 years old. And, um, uh, the success criteria, so the coverage of plants, the diversity of plants, those types of things, the agency says, you need to achieve this. They, they, you have to go out and do a report every year. So the applicant has been doing that. And they, they measure from beginning to end, um, whether those standards have been achieved. Uh, this last report from August states that the standards have been achieved and in some selected areas, um, exceeded. Uh, so, um, the agencies have to approve where the mitigation is done. And like I say, the level, the, the quality and the area of the mitigation. If you can't do mitigation, as you all have heard, there are regional, what they call banks, mitigation banks of large wetland restoration that you can pay into. And that, that restoration is done outside Pinellas County. There are no banks in Pinellas County. In this case, um, they didn't have to do that. We had this site available, um, and, uh, they did the, the mitigation here. So, as far as the agencies are concerned, the services of the wetland impacts have already been replaced. Does that help?
Well, it, it helps me a lot. I hope it helps somebody else. So in other words, I'll just summarize it because she's the top. There was a dump on the Anglo River, and they cleaned up a big portion of the dump and made it look pretty like those pictures that they can build on this part. It was, according to Mike, never actually wetland to begin, was, was dredged a long time ago. It used to be all upland, they dug it out.
Yeah.
That's just according to Mike right there, because he's been here longer than everybody, you can tell.
What is upland?
Okay, upland is dry land.
Okay.
What's the fancy word for dry?
Wet is wet, dry, upland is dry, wet is like?
You did great, Pat, thank you very much. I was trying to give credit where it's due, right? There, there's been a lot of work done in order to be able to do the work that's there.
Okay, all right, okay. So, just so I understand, everybody understands, historically, when you have wetland, some of it's bad wetland, it's not all good wetland, they swap. A developer will swap us out, provide you better opportunity for more pristine or precious land that you want to preserve, okay? In exchange, allow me to fill in some of this bad wetland. And so that was done years ago, okay? They purchased or acquired more pristine or more needed land in exchange for the opportunity to fill in junk wetland. Okay, does that make sense?
It does.
Okay. And you try to do it on-site. If you can't do it on-site, just to clarify, you can go within the city limits if it's available. If it's not available, let's say you're building a big project, and there's not enough within the city, you can bank, go anywhere in the state, where we've had developers buy land up in, in the, in the, up in Pasco or the, or central Florida to preserve that wetland. So the developer will exchange buying that wetland in exchange for letting me to develop this one, okay?
Interesting, I didn't know that.
So, so, and, and a question for Pat. Historically, historically, because I know sometimes wetlands become wetlands that were never wetlands before over the course of time. I know that for a fact, okay? And, and so this property may have never been always wetland. It may have been upland that was, like you said, dredged, okay? All right. If you look at that development where they were, that's never been developed behind Ace Hardware, that wasn't always canals, okay? That was dredged to make, to make those waterfront condos or water access condos. Okay, because you never would have perfect?
Yeah.
Okay, if that makes, if that makes sense.
Yes.
Okay, so that was dredged for that purpose, okay? I'll just give you a little bit of historical data on that, okay?
Thank you.
All right. Um, with regard to questions, and I understand that the, the runoff or the drainage will be, because drainage has to remain on-site, okay? They're bad enough, there's going to be an overflow. But typically, when you have a parking lot, you, or, or you have to, uh, all your non-pervious, uh, drainage has to remain on-site. So that's what you saw, that, that, I would have called it a, a retention pond, but it's not a pond, it's a retention bank or, okay, vault, okay? So, um, I hope that answers some of the questions that everybody has. As far as questions, Pat, um, I just have comments, and I'll reserve my comments for later, because now's not the time for comments. I just want to make sure that if anybody's got a question, you have another question. And let's address the questions, and when we open it up, um, for the applicant, we could ask him questions. But as far as opinions or comments, I, I, but a request that we wait till we, uh, are in session, and then we can have our, address our opinions. But at this point, the board should only be asking questions. Go ahead.
Okay. I'll delay my question for a comment.
Okay.
Follow your rules.
Okay, all right. Any other questions for this, for staff? At this point, the applicant, please introduce yourself.
Definitely. Uh, thank you so much, uh, J.D. Elsabah, Sicomo Engineering, 8370 West Hillsborough Avenue, Suite 205, Tampa, Florida 33615, and I already sworn. So thank you so much for clarification. Uh, I have, I thought I'm going to start to discuss the project completely, but Pat covered almost everything. So I'm going to go to mainly, mostly to the major point as discussed. For instance, the drainage, the drainage, as you mentioned, we have a drainage system which can treat and attenuate the runoff on-site and later overflow. Anything, what they call it, uh, uh, over and beyond can be, uh, uh, overflow. This site in particular require only treatment, not require attenuation. However, we provide treatment and attenuation and hand it is on that site.
Hmm.
That's one. So this site, um, it's also, um, entitled influence. Which the title influence is, it's, you know, it's not required mitigation even in the flood area there. So, um, so that's what will make it, you know, different, you know, case and the other. The, these, uh, the flood elevation is thin. However, the finished floor is seven, as we did, based on the request of the staff. And we're going to go ahead and do prove protection to the foundation, which cost, uh, uh, highly. We try to make it pedestrian-friendly, the building, so it can be accessible as in the downtown, and that's what the target was. The same way with the landscaping, as requested by the staff and based on the smart code, we did all what they asking for to, to place it. So that's, that's, I think, as far as the height, we trying to make it also 20 foot or 25 foot, as mentioned by Pat. Um, and the same, you see the style, the architectural style, try as, as close to the area as, as we can with this here. So the, as, as you mentioned exactly, this is started about probably 15 years ago. And the quality of the wetland is very low. Not by my opinion, by environmental scientists, and by the agency who came and review the wetland as far as a SWFMD or Army Corps of Engineer. So based on that, when you want to impact a wetland area, you do what's called a UMM. So you went with MIMU, UMM, uh, method to determine, as mentioned by Pat, the, what's the, uh, uh, existing quality of that, create score multiplied by the area you're going to make impact, and created you acquire point seven unit to mitigate. Point seven unit can be banked and can be somewhere else. We, what we did is, is like, we went and created and then North Anglo Park River, because something also useful to the city at that time, when we started it. So we held also the city, they trying to do, so they have some retrofit project, and we did it. And we did, paid for that, and created it and create that wetland. As mentioned exactly, the wetland has been in operation for over 10 years. And periodically, our environmental scientist, uh, create what they call it Operation and Maintenance Report, where they go and observe it and create his report and submit it to the agency, SWFMD and Army Corps. And the same way, no objection. And of course, the city aware of it, the public work, Tom, before he retired, he was working with us closely on this. So, um, I mean, we did everything what it take. And I encourage you to walk that site. You're going to see, and I walked it this afternoon before I came here. It's, it's really dry. It's really dry. I know you see, it's like wetland and wet and other, you'd be, you'd be, you'd be surprised what it is. Regardless, this is another question. It's defined 15 years ago as wetland. We still, we three times get approved by, uh, uh, SWFMD, three times. The last one was last year, so, which is effective every five years. And as mentioned exactly, Army Corps is expired. We submitted, we work into extension, which is no issue, they told us. Um, we submitted in May. Until now, we didn't hear from them. What we hear too, I was out of the office, and this is like two and a half months ago. We are out of the office, so sorry about that on the delay, but we will get back to you as soon as possible. The second reply about two weeks ago to indicate to me that, as you know, they, that, the, the, uh, the federal government is closed. So, you know, we are delayed, so that's the reason we delay. And when we open back as, as soon as we can, we can get you back the response. So, uh, uh, before I continue and make some comment also and ask from Pat, uh, I would love to, uh, any other question or clarification, I would love to help and answer.
Okay, and we'll start. Does anybody have any questions of the applicant?
We discussed a bit the traffic. Not requiring a traffic study. Realistically, I mean, have you looked at Apricot and Pinellas Avenue? And, because that intersection, right close to it at Mears, there, there was a major accident just a week or so ago.
Yes, definitely.
I'm concerned about that.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm, I tell you the truth, the, the issue we face, we don't have access to, to Pinellas Avenue. So which is DOT road?
Hey.
Okay, which is DOT. And we don't have access to Mears Boulevard. Fantastic. We have access to the side of the street.
Yeah.
The side of the street, which is, might be, I'm not going to say zero trip, but we are, our trip that, the one generated. And we have what they call the throttle. As you see, longer throttle, which is, can back upwards four, five car before it, it coming to, they're going to stop in the traffic in the stop bar.
Yeah.
Because we're taking the right or the left on this here. Which is the best of my ability, this is a, a excellent one. Tell you the truth, we did traffic study as far, when you try to walk on the access here. The, they generated a trip, is this in the threshold? With the, with the, listen, the threshold is in, this and the number required is the minimums. And that's what Pinellas County, when they say it will not give you another access, because a small amount of trip generated. And they say one access is more than enough.
I mean, how do you even determine that 51 number or anything? But that probably goes into a lot of detail. Uh, the other question I have, and, and we mentioned it before, um, I know that there have been studies, and you said one study last year. Have you gone around last year after the hurricanes? Those condos over in there?
Right.
Like a war zone. You know, most of those condos on that first floor were all devastated. I mean, what is going to happen to your spot there? And what is going to happen to, you know, how tall is your seawall? When is it going to go over? And when is it going to impact those canals?
So, so kindly, you referring to the town home? Which, which town home?
Okay, they're right off of Mears. Right as you come and turn off of Pinellas Avenue, they're right behind you.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, if, 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 um, you kindly, I can, I can?
Side of the street, they're actually on the same side of the street as he's on.
Right, okay, here's the site. This is vacant. Uh, there are condos here, and I believe here.
Right, all of those.
Okay.
They're on the canal.
Right.
And they were all flooded.
Right.
Flooded terribly.
So, um, I'm going to tell you, so as engineer, I have 28 years of experience.
Yeah.
So whenever happened storm in Tampa Bay area, and I'm resident, 28 years in Tampa Bay area, which love it, I go after the storm and visit my project. Not only last year, but year before and after. So let me give you, I can study, I can speak what I know. I could not speak on something I don't know, which is the example you're talking about. I mean, I can study it and report back to you.
Yeah. Because also, if you go on MLK, which is right on that canal, those houses were all destroyed. And they are on that canal that comes right out of there also.
Right.
Um, so I'm just concerned, because at a high tide, the water's flowing over into their swimming pools over there, and you know, um, I, I cannot.
I, I'm sorry, I was just asking, I don't know what the question was, I missed a question.
Oh, what, what is he going to do to make sure that there isn't a significant increase in water?
I am, I'm one of the issue we do, I am not, uh, uh, one of the issue we do flood modeling, okay? So I can tell you something. I have the owner to be the designer, the engineer for that suite bay in 2008. I am the engineer, you see the record. I am also the engineer for that apartment complex south of it, which is done five years ago. So one of the things those, I visits him, of course, after the hurricane.
They are not on the canals either, right?
I'm sorry?
They are not on the canals.
Oh, they are not, but they're close to the wetland area. And they are, we connected, by the way, is a suite bay, we connected it through pipe to, through Metropolis property to, to, to suite bay. So it's, you can say title influence also on this here. So if you don't mind, I don't mind, I tell you the truth, what's his case? Um, I can study it and let you know on this here. But, but?
It's okay, I just personally, um, I think your building looks great, but from my own personal standpoint, I think it's a terrible location. That's all I can say.
Yeah, that's, that's, okay, because I, I want to, again, I want to focus on questions and not on comments.
So, I just want to?
That's okay.
Actually, I'm good, I'm going to apologize on behalf of the board that it's not our place at this point. We're here to ask questions and get informed, and passing our personal judgment is not appropriate at that point. There's a different time for that, and I'm sorry.
No problem. Can I mention back on the electrical brought up? So if you kind of?
Well, let's, let's, let them ask the questions, and then you can answer. We'll start on that end.
Yes, thank you. As I mentioned earlier, the, uh, the power lines, what it looks like uh, in your plan for the, I guess, the appearance of the corner, uh, of your project.
Okay, so what we do? Okay, so what we do, we going at you so in entitlement and concept plan, which will be solid, we're gonna follow with the construction plan. When we started the construction plan process, we go and communicate with the electrical company. As far the service, as far, and they look into all that area there, as far above the ground, below the ground. And they give us the option as far how they're gonna serve our project. And we discuss it back and forth, this is the best option, the most economical one, the most efficient one. And how we're gonna work with the pole and to place it or change it. So this is, as mentioned also by Pat, is really a detail we work it through whenever we started in the, in the, in the construction phase.
I appreciate, thank you.
The only thing that comes to mind about this project is, I would hope that you have a way to make it clear to your clients. Where they're going to be turning, where they're parking, simply because I fear that people might park across the street and try to negotiate South Pinellas Avenue. So I would hope that your signage, whatever you're allowed to put as, as signage, would be, would be ample enough to, uh, to deter anyone from thinking, maybe if they're coming from outside the area, from thinking that it's a good idea to park across the street and negotiate South, South Pinellas.
Absolutely, we can do that. And, and just kindly, if you allow me, we have discussion with the team and they said, hey, we have over too much parking. And we need to reduce it, smart code and other, and that's why we work with them closely. We believe that might be better, more parking is good idea, but at the same time, we work with them on how we mitigate it. So previous pavement and reduction and other adding some island there. So, I mean, we, we would love to add the sign as requested, but at the same time, we are trying to get, get the smart code and apply it fully as, as requested with, with whatever parking number and reduction in the heat, you know, um, rate or other, in, in the same time.
Okay, thank you.
Pardon me, I, I forgot your name.
So.
Your name?
So. My apology, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm have a flu, so it might be my hearing, it's not supposed to be.
I'll just say Mr. Engineer then.
Yeah, J D Ozeborg, your name, he's writing your name.
J D Ozeborg, right. J D would be fantastic, thank you.
So, honest question, honest answer. One of the conditions, so staff has said, what I think is pretty tough bar for you in regards to warranting conditions. And I'm concerned about condition number three.
Pat, can you, can you put the conditions up?
Condition of the trees, okay.
No, I'm gonna try and help here. I, I, number three, the condition is provide all other jurisdictional permits with the site construction permit application, including US Corps of Engineers, Pinellas County Navigation Authority. And I, it's the engineer one that has been out. So I'm concerned that that bar is unnecessarily high. And you made comment unintentionally that even though you would prefer to be able to, and I can believe you that you would provide all that documentation, that your hands might be tied by a US government agency that simply won't provide that to you. And I just want to ask, do you think it's reasonable and highly likely that all of those bodies that you have no control over are gonna supply you the documents that you need in six months?
That's, it's one of my item list, I wanna ask for extension of state of six months. When to, I mean, if there is any way, um, in case it show the intention, if it's not approved like Army Corps, especially Army Corps, SWFMD, you know, our local people, I mean, we knew, we interact, no issue. Which we permitted already. Tell you the truth, the Phil and Dridge, the Pinellas County. We have a meeting with them and it's approved by Army Corps, it's approved by SWFMD. However, for them, um, they wanted full review, and I'm not sure, I tell you the truth, what the review for. But we submitted it and they said we are backlog. When we speak in May, they said something in October, somebody for his dog, I think, fall or broken during melting. Until now, not get approved.
Okay, so I'm glad that I asked and I'm glad that you answered.
Please, thank you.
And, and, and this isn't the question, but it, it's obvious that you've acted in good faith for fifteen years. Ten or fifteen years in regards to the mitigation, so we can trust you to act in good faith. And would you be willing to accept if we were able to get staff to maybe revise that condition number three? To have a built-in extension, would that be acceptable?
Please, please, and kindly, the second item I'm asking for, I, I tell you the truth, we have discussion, me and Pat on this one, which is the twenty-four foot wide driveway. I am, I have thirty-one and I have it for safety, the thirty-one foot. And Pat show me that's, the, the code said no wider than twenty-four. And I don't want to, you know, I'm, I'm doing for safety and I show her, I do auto turn, which show the truck how move, which is based on that, I would thirty-one. However, I don't want, I mean, if there is no way to widen it, I'm gonna keep it twenty-four on this here. So this one of the item, I have discussion with Pat and she show me the code, that's a code, is a code, we follow. So this is one point.
So the clarification for me in regards to that point, this is the actual driveway cut that is gonna be on that north facing accessory road that right now is only a parking lot for our local police department. It is a completely unused road. Well, it goes to a dead end gate, right? We all cut through there to get to Ace, right, traffic's a little bit heavy. So you would prefer to have thirty-one instead of twenty-four, but Mr. Stevens, where staff says, hey, the rule says twenty-four.
Correct.
And that guy Justin on the board is a real stickler for the rules, I don't even wanna ask him for that.
I mean, I, I'm, and I.
Levity. I was listening, okay, so you would, if it was possible.
Yes.
Thirty-one would make you happier and you'd also be willing to accept a voluntary extension on those government documents that are not in your control.
And, and, and I, I just, I show her earlier how auto turn will show the truck how move and based on that, the which we define, which is, you know, you, you, you know what I'm, I'm saying here. So if there is way, I would love to on this one.
Agreed, that's all my questions, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, my third point, if you don't mind kindly, this is approved in twenty-twenty, the same. Thirteen thousand, everything, COVID came, we have an issue, as you know, everybody with offices. The offices, you know, in low demand and other, we delayed, no demand, so we pick up, the permit lost, we expired. So now, they approve us before two phases in, in, in the site plan. The first phase, clearing the site, which why we needed clear the site. And we trying to get, clear the site, add fill and compact, take the clay, any things, compact it, have it ready. And two geotechnical boring for the building, because we cannot access it, which they approve the staff. The second phase in this is construction plan approval also. So we asking respectfully, if they allow us to do that the same as I did before. And we ready to follow all the condition as far when we start to do their silt fence inspection, all of this ready to do, which they agree before and I agree about that, but would love to have it now also. If I need to clarify, I would love to.
I, I don't, I don't think so, I can't speak for anybody else, but we would have to discuss staff with that at, at the right time for that request.
All right, thank you, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Pat some questions based on our comments. And, and I familiar with the requirements of having they get the Army Corps of Engineers permits, which can be pulling teeth. And, and that's why I asked you about, but, you know, I look at the requirements, Pinellas water, that's not, that's not navigable waters anyways, because it's not navigable.
Correct.
They, they, they should not, I don't think, I think that's a no-brainer as far as getting past the county. But with regard to the Army Corps of Engineers, that is a brainer and that's based on, and, and they could care less about your time requirements or the cities.
Correct.
And, and so I, I guess I'm gonna throw this back at Pat or staff or, or council, is, let's say, and whether we vote to approve this or not, and let's say we vote to approve it, that is a monument, could be a monumental obstacle to get this thing approved. Okay, then we're back here again, you know, because you couldn't get the permit going in front of us another time. And I just wanna try to see, and correct me if I'm wrong, is what.
We can work on it, we can work with that issue, if he can't get that. I mean, I'm very familiar, as you are chair, that it takes forever to get them, especially now. So we can work with that condition and work with them to delay. If someone has gone through and we're waiting on them, it's not an issue.
Okay, so, so if somebody made a permit app, that's why I go to a permit application. In other words, I'm submitting a permit application subject to me getting this. I don't want the six months to run out and he's still waiting for the Army Corps of Engineer.
As long as the application is made timely and it's over there with them.
But that's, but Pat said after six months, it's done.
So, yeah, so the, so the, there are two, two things here, first of all, he, there is no code requirement to obtain agency permits prior, uh, prior to pulling a city building permit. He could pull the city building permit, he wouldn't be able to fill the site obviously without the core permit or some kind of core approval, but he could, he could pull the site construction permit. You know, apply for it and pull it while he's working on, on the core. Then he's got, what, hundred and eighty days till first inspection, he's got, you know, he's got some more time. He could ask you all for, then there's the second part of the code that I just read you. That's pretty clear that at least the planning director and I are operating under that being clear, the six months to obtain. You can, again, ask for a phased plan, he can ask for longer time.
Please.
He, he can ask for those things and the board, according to that code, has the ability to give him that, that different plan that he would like to, to do.
So this board can, can phase it if, if we put that as part of our.
Yes.
Condition, that it be phased.
Please.
Okay.
So.
So whoever's.
So there's phasing, what, what Mr. Ozeborg was talking about was the, the site work, the site construction and the vertical, the building permit. Those were the phases. You still need the core permit to actually do the site construction, cuz it involves fill, but, um, you, you wouldn't, your second thing would be then to perhaps modify the condition that they don't need the other agency permits before they pull the city permit.
And just a clarification, just for me, what, and you may have already said it, but it takes me twice. What was staff's purpose and reasoning for the combo permit? That it must be site and vertical at the same time? Is, is that the code that you were just referring to, that, that's written into our code of ordinances?
No.
Or that was just your preference?
The planning and zoning director is concerned, um, is concerned with, with, with the phasing. She, she's concerned that we may end up with a, um, site that's been altered, filled. And then nothing happens.
That is a great concern, I'm glad I asked.
That is not to disparage Mr. Ozeborg at all, maybe he can't go forward or maybe there's something that happens. She's concerned about, um, that possibility. And, you know, so, so in her direction, that, that condition was added.
If I can say something?
Not quite yet.
Okay.
But, but thank you, just so we don't get into a back and forth, I think we were done with, with applicant comment. Now we're at ask staff comment, okay, I'm really glad I asked that question. So just to repeat, the purpose of that condition, which is a tough one, is because the director, Ms. Vincent, was concerned about that and wanted it was done.
Yeah, wanted to make sure that the full building plans were submitted for all the vertical construction in addition to the full site.
Okay, then I wanna move forward since I got your attention. What was the concern about twenty-four foot curb cut versus thirty-one foot, other than that's what was written in the rulebook?
That's a smart code requirement.
Not to exceed twenty-four feet?
Yeah, it, it, it's not, it might be something we look at when we revise the smart code. But unfortunately, the smart code restricts a two-way driveway to twenty-four feet and specifies the only way to, to change that is through a variance. Now the applicant can ask for a variance to that.
But is, so that, that's a no, no deal for us, is that we.
Yeah, that is not a warrant in your smart code, it's a variance that go to the Board of Adjustment.
Okay, thank you so much for answering that question.
Just, just so I'm, I'm clear, um, with regard to site plan and building, so those are gonna, could those be bifurcated applications?
Those will be two separate permit numbers, the site construction and the vertical building permit construction.
Okay, so he could submit them even though, I'm just thinking out loud here, that absent the, the Army Corps of Engineers, he could submit for the permit, he just cannot do the fill until he gets the approval.
That's correct.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I, I, we, we've not, we, we haven't closed the, his portion of it yet, so you can respond. So do you wanna respond to what I just asked?
I wanna, I'll just, uh, just make clear, the phasing, which agree twenty-twenty, I think, um, Vincent was part of it. The same as Pat, both of them agree, and look what we ended up here, after five years, we could not even any of them do. So what the concern, I, I'm not sure what the concern is, but the concern, uh, 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 issue is, we will not clear it until we have the required permitting fully from everybody. And we have the mitigation and everything there. The second is, look to the condition we have right now. I mean, we look to the condition there is the homeless and two side, which repeatedly we have an issue with. Clearing its safety, its add, look to the city, to the corner, and we are gonna do the construction soon.
No, I, I, I understand that.
Right.
I think with regard to the widening is a different board, not us.
Right, I understood.
Okay.
But we would love to have the condition, right.
So, you know, that's not a condition that, that we have.
Correct.
Okay.
That's what I'm asking respectfully, if we can add it.
We can't, that's not part of our purview here, this is planning and zoning, this is not the Board of Adjustment. Okay, you have to ask the Board of Adjustment if you want to widen the driveway or the entrance, okay, that has nothing to do with us. But I guess I'm trying to solve the problem is with the Army Corps, is that even though you wanna start construction right away, you obviously can't do any construction until you fill in the wetlands, right?
Correct.
Okay, which requires you to get the Army Corps of Engineers.
Correct.
Approval, but does not preclude you from making application for the permits for both the site and the vertical. Okay, and just that you can't do the site work until the Army Corps gives you the okay. But at least if you make application for the permits, and, and y'all hear me out if I'm wrong, is that you can make application for the permits, get them granted, and then they have to extend because the city attorney is here, understanding that the, the onus of dealing with the Army Corps of Engineers.
Right.
The, the, the delays that, that will, may require your permit before you can do anything. And I think what the city attorney is saying, that the city will look at giving you latitude.
Right.
Okay, with regard to any delay as, if it, if the delay is a result of the Army Corps.
Right.
Okay, and I, I don't know, can we make a pronouncement as for a, a recommendation for an extension? We can't grant you an extension, but we can, if there's gonna be a motion, a recommendation for extension, okay? Because of any delays caused by an Army Corps.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Does that kind of makes sense to the, the board if there's a motion to that? regard?
Right.
Okay. Anybody have any more questions before I close it, or wait, wait, go to public comment?
Can I say, so, this is the application referred to, which we need to do before, six months before the end. It's full construction plan, full building plan, and the issue with the full building plan, you need to have foundation and other design, and we don't have geotechnical. We don't have that until we clear and get some response. We faced this one before, and I understand, you say the phasing is not too far, but my understanding that's might be, it's good idea if you recommended it, and I know the approval for the board, but if, that's suggested not more, because the application, not filling application, more than set of architectural-
I understand that.
And, and a building plan. So, and this, I could not achieve it without the clearing and, and getting some, nobody can design that without, without geotechnical and other material there.
Oh, I got what you're saying, is you can't do a design until you know the geotechnical-
Just what we did for Mugro, he can't, the, the engineer won't stamp the footing and foundation until he gets the geotech report, he can't get the geotech report-
Without the Army Corps.
That he's gonna fill.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I, we really would like to defer to Renee Vincent, meaning that, and she kinda wants it a certain way.
Right.
But this is a pretty legitimate reason not to fall into discussion, forgive me, but the-
We don't have to prove that condition.
I mean, how can he?
It's, he kinda can't.
You can recommend removing that condition or delaying it for, 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 I mean, you're, you're making the recommendations.
Well, it's only a condition, and I'll say, please, baby Jesus, don't be mad at me, um, if a motion was made without that condition, the motion's made without that condition.
Right, I mean, exactly.
That's a-
It's a recommendation, it's a direction that you're making to, uh, the city to be aware of the problems that the applicant could have.
Yeah.
Last thing we wanna do is bring the applicant back to you for the same request that has nothing to do with something that he did.
Right, right. Okay, if, if, if that condition is removed completely, um, it would go back to the, the, would go back to what the code says, which is, you know, six months unless a construction permit or building permit is obtained, so it'd go back to that. So at that point, you're, um, you, you would, he would be able to get the site or permit first, do his geotech, do the building permit. Now, the six months would be in effect, so that was the second thing I think you wanted to address about the agency permits, so the, the length you would address with whatever condition you wanted to provide for extensions based on, um, Army Corps processing.
So if I understand your comment, by removing condition number one, we've solved two elements, the timing and the fact that he physically can't do them both. Is that how I understood that?
Um, you've removed the fact that he can't physically do both. The timing is still six months unless you approve, because the, um-
Or create a, a loophole in number three that it's really about the US Corps of Engineers? Would just create a loophole within number three about intent?
That's where you would address it.
Without it being hard.
Right.
Yeah.
I, I, I think your intention is, is that, that, one of the things I guess the, the city's concern would be, obviously, is that the application is made timely, right? That, that is one we wanna make sure occurs. We just don't wanna delay about six months and then make the application and then have another six to nine months down the road.
Condition it upon, can you condition the clock to start within so many months of getting approval from the Army Corps?
I would more be inclined to recommend that you give a time period for the application to be made for the permit with, uh, for approval by the Army Corps, and then with a recommendation that the, uh, city acknowledge the difficulty with that particular obtaining that and not hold that back against him. But, but we still gotta get it timely done, right?
Yeah.
That, that's the big concern.
Right.
But you, I believe Chair said, like, used to be a time period to apply-
Yeah.
Versus obtain, attain, right?
Yeah, then you applied it, you had all these criteria you had to meet before you get your permit, okay, I made application, now, you know, I have to get these satisfactions from governmental, uh, uh, authorities that could take time, but that doesn't, that doesn't stop my clock from, that abates the clock until such time is-
Right.
Those things are secured.
And I mean, I think the legitimate concern is also with timing, that we all are acknowledged that it's taking longer-
Yeah.
-to get any response from them.
I'm trying to find a, we're trying to find a solution to your issue that we recognize as a problem that's outside of everybody's purview here, um, and, um, I'm gonna rely on this board. Yeah, I'll rely on this board to, to come up with a solution.
Well, the other thing I would say to the board is that instead of maybe coming up with a direct solution, is that it's a solid recommendation of the board that this issue be dealt with so that it's, the applicant is not being punished, um, so that we can, you know, we can talk to Renee and figure out a way to deal with that, um, if that's your recommendation and commission adopts that.
Okay, all right, okay. At this point, I'm gonna go ahead and close. Is there any public comment to this?
Julie Wade, 1095 Main Sail Drive. This is the third time I've seen proposals from this applicant, and he's been before code board, and he's, there were homeless issues on this property. I'm sorry you bought swampland in Florida. I understand that you spent money mitigating on a different property, and I appreciate that you did that, and you did a nice job on that. Maybe you can sell those credits, because the credits are saleable to another developer, but I don't feel that this property is appropriate for what you're planning for the site. Some of these are gonna be out of order, as I looked through the backup materials. The survey, I couldn't find the date on that, and the last time you came before the board, the survey was not correct. The water had changed the outline of the property, and you came to the full Board of Commissioners with an incorrect survey. Your geotechnical report that was in this packet was dated from 2010, and there was water covering that property at that time. The report states, "I could not check everything because I was waiting on this property." Recommendation was for pilings or soil removal down six feet and then building back up to that level plus six feet, because the soil is so bad. It's full of debris, it's full of material that can't be built upon, it's full of organic material, and your own guy said it was, his report was based, I'm quoting, "based on limited subsurface investigation." Then they talked about putting in a dry foundation. I would not wanna put my medical office in a place that had a quote, "dry foundation," and it is six feet above sea level on land that we know floods. Your own drainage, drainage analysis says excludes preserved wetland area. I was surprised Swift Mud gave the okay, but I understand it was because of the credits that you had. In the wildlife survey, it just breaks your heart to think of destroying that much wetlands and tidal flats. There was no mention of the retention of the mangroves that are there. Um, the city tonight said, "The new comp plan prohibits wetland impacts." Now, maybe he can get away with that because he's already mitigated those, but at tonight's meeting, you said that. I don't know why we would permit this in a flood zone. The apricot entrance is better than your previous entrance at, when you presented this plan earlier. You might consider a smaller building, maybe on stilts, a lot less parking, and, but I'm not sure you can make your money back on that because of how much this has to be mitigated to build anything there. The improvements are just so costly. Medical offices are logical in that area, but it feels like you're trying to put 20 pounds of stuff on a 10 pound, in a 10-pound sack on an unstable surface. So from, I live right nearby there, I don't object to a medical office building, but I just don't think that this is the appropriate site for this, and I think everybody's fighting so hard to try to make it work for you, but I think the land is just not gonna be developable for anything of that kind of size. That's just from a person that lives near there. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comment? Okay, there being none, I'm gonna go ahead and close a public comment on this and then put it back to this board. You know, and I think before we get into discussion, I know everybody's got an opinion, uh, I probably would like to, to hear a motion, and then we can have a thorough discussion before we vote. So, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, this is a motion just to, to discuss this.
I, I think, I, well, I think you make a motion to either approve, or if there's no motion, it fails. If there's a motion to approve, doesn't mean you have to approve it, it just means it opens it up for discussion, and if there's, and, and absent a motion, the, the applicant fails on its face. So you, so if you wanna make a motion to include all the conditions that we feel are appropriate, and then that allows us to have a discussion, we can't, should not have a discussion without some type of motion, okay? And so I, I would look to this board for a motion, uh, a motion to include whatever conditions the, the, the board think are appropriate, and then we can have a discussion and determine whether or not that particular applicant should either move forward or not move forward. So that's why I'm putting it back to this board to make a motion.
I, I think the lady wanted to make a motion.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Well, no, I just wanted to clarify what we were making a motion on.
Okay. Well, you, 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 you could make a motion to deny, and it, and if it passes and it's dead, if, if you can make, then it, then it would be a motion, somebody else would can make a motion to approve with conditions, and then that'll open up for discussion. So if somebody wants to make a motion, I'd like to entertain one.
Well, I would make that motion, Mr. Chairman, I believe the current application is 2025-65 to approve, uh, the proposal here with the numerous conditions and adaptations we've discussed, uh, and with the city providing some allowances for timelines based on the required documentation, which may be arduous to obtain.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, now we can have a discussion, ask to that motion.
A clarification, um, on the, I can't repeat your words exactly, because there was so much discussion. Maybe you, as the motion maker, could clarify your expectation for the conditions, as written or as discussed, or how would you like them?
Uh, as discussed, and I believe we talked about omitting condition number three, uh, and amending possibly one of the other ones, and then possibly imposing a condition for the city to give serious consideration to allowances in the required timelines, and also offer the applicant the opportunity to go to the zoning board of appeals for the driveway variance if he feels it's warranted.
There was a motion and a second. I just wanna make sure I understand, I, I just wanna make sure I understand the motion. Okay, um, so you're saying about removal of, of condition number three, um, as far as securing jurisdictional permits and approvals submitted with the site construction permit application, uh, to include not only the Army Corps of Engineers, but Pinellas County Water Navigation Authority, to remove that as a condition, but the condition to, to have both the site construction and vertical permits done simultaneously is, but, but you also want to include in your motion, that is strongly recommended, that the city provide latitude in the application process as a result of the requirements by, uh, outside governmental authority? Would that be pretty much what you're saying?
Yes, yeah, yeah, the condition number one, and also I think we omitted the, the request for, uh, the warrant for the landscaping, uh, change as recommended by the city staff.
Okay, and that's consistent with your second, correct? Cause you seconded the motion?
Yes.
Okay, all right, now we can have a discussion. Okay, um, I, I, I will tell you, since, um, first of all, with regard to concerns of construction, you can't build something without a solid base, and whether the ground is bad or not, it, it's irrelevant, because you have to have the boring studies and everything in place, even if you've got bad soil, you have to remove it or build something that, that, a structure that size will have to tolerate. So that, to me, is a non-issue. If you know anything about construction, you can't just say, oh, whatever it is, you have to meet those engineering requirements, one. Two, on my other boards that I serve on, I'm actually vice chair of, of Advent Health, and I will tell you, and this is very critical for me, okay? There's a reason we, we need primary care physicians, we need primary care physicians in this community. Too many times, our residents have to leave the city of Tarpon Springs, go see a doctor because their primary care is located somewhere else, and there's a desperate need in this community for, for Class A medical office space. Desperate need, okay? And that has to do with the wellness of this community. Um, there've been other attempts for medical office buildings, obviously, you know, this is not the panacea, but, but I, I looked at this when I saw the, the application come through, and I said, wow, that, that really solves a problem within the community as far as the wellness of this community. Okay, um, you, you were gonna say something?
I, I am.
Okay.
I disagree with you in a sense, if I can-
That's what I mean.
What I'm discovering is that our medical professionals, our doctors, our primary care physicians, what they're doing is, they're not just leaving Tarpon because they don't have anywhere to have an office, no, no. You know where they're going? Trinity.
No, no, I, I don't, the, the, first you're telling me something I know 100% accurate of, okay?
I'm just saying it out loud.
Okay, you could say, but we have, when you look at not only primary care, but you look at also specialty care, okay, that the, there's a significant lack of Class A, Class A medical office building in this community. Significant.
What's a Class A medical office building?
Really nice.
Oh, okay.
Okay, all right? Uh, not a storefront.
Yeah.
Okay.
Trinity.
Okay, and, and that's, when you look at a business model of a hospital, they build a hospital, and if you look at every hospital in this area, next to that hospital's a medical office building. Why? Because it, it's an attractor. Look at our hospital, we have a great hospital, but there's no medical office building next to it.
It's cause all the area to the right of it, to the south.
Well, first of all, it's, it's, it's funding, it's funding, and I'm not gonna get into the technical, financial details of the hospital, but I could tell you Advent Health has invested tens and tens of millions of dollars in our facility, okay? Tens of millions of dollars.
Oh, yeah.
Okay? And, and so that's projected in the future, but that's not needed five years from now. It's needed now, okay? I'm just saying that, that, I'm not saying that to sway your vote, I'm just saying that because I know the, the need, and I know the vacuum with regard to that need, okay? Now, is this the right location? The upside is, it's, you, 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 you look at Green Dolphin and the others community, you have doctors that would be walking distance, okay, to where you live. If, cause if you look at, like, Green Dolphin, for example, not that it's an over 55 community, but most of the people that live-
Cities.
You know, yeah, most of the people that live in that area- but most of the people that live, you know, yeah, most of the people that live in that area are in the Green Dolphin or seniors, okay? And here you have a doctor you can walk to instead of having to get in your car and drive down 19 or alternate 19 to Palm Harbor or Pasco or whatever the case may be. So it serves that need. And so that's what I look at when I sit on this board is, is the applicant improving? Obviously, there's a business aspect to it. But when you have a business aspect that also I think addresses a community need, it makes me look at that a little bit more favorably than just, you know.
True.
And that's the way I look at it. And so I was happy to see this. I know, I don't want to hog the microphone. I'm sure everybody else has their own comments or other thoughts. So I said my piece. Thank you. So if that's the case, there was, unless anybody has a comment, I will call for the motion.
Chairman, I would like to say if this was a residential build at this area, at this location, at the elevation, would that not be required to be on stilts?
That's, when you're dealing with commercial, it's a different animal.
Understand, understand that.
And I know with FEMA, with FEMA and council, first of all, you would lose your FEMA accreditation if it did not meet FEMA requirements. Correct me if I'm wrong, council.
You are correct.
Okay. So for it to make, for it to be a buildable location and get a CO, it has to satisfy FEMA requirements. And if the requirements, or the city has requirements with regard to flood proofing, then that's the requirements. But understand this, okay? What we had a year ago was a 100-year event, okay? It was a 100-year event. Not that it won't happen for another 100 years, it could happen tomorrow. But those type of catastrophic events are 100-year storms. They call it a 100-year storm. You can't, you cannot build, or the city should not look, or anybody should look to build to prevent 100, you would hope that you have enough to satisfy 100-year event, but you can't move forward if you're going to just plan for 100-year event. Otherwise, you would have to wipe out half of downtown Tarpon Springs because it was flooded.
I think we have to have smart development, smart development, not just say, well, it probably won't happen again, go ahead.
Well, I understand that, but there, but as long as it's within the governmental requirements or guidelines, it's not for us to, you know what I'm saying?
I see what you're saying.
Okay. So if the government agencies say, look, you could build there. Obviously, you could have a 100-year event, but you could build there. That means it satisfied the government requirements, FEMA requirements.
I think what I'm having a hard time with is Tarpon was so consumed with doing better at the Sponge Docks, doing better, I mean, in terms of her flooding. Now, why?
I could say, half those buildings down at the Sponge Docks already have foundations, but that's a different story.
But, you know, I thought we were on the road to trying to be better. You know, in terms of planning and developing. That, that's where I'm having a hard time.
Okay, so what would be better?
If I may interject, I'll suggest what might be better and I'm going to answer your question at the same time because it's a complex topic. So number four on the review criteria of the site plan, city building codes. This addresses this topic kind of directly. The project will be required to, comma, and is expected to be able to meet the standard of the city building codes. This is going to include flood proofing. The applicant wishes to implement multi-tenant flood proofing. What that means is that's a style of construction. It is not normally chosen. In fact, I've never seen it done really. So what they're going to do is they're going to build the building so that the layer that is within the flood zone, in this case, is going to be at least three feet, probably four. We have seven at slab, the base flood elevation is 10, we have one foot of freeboard. So the first four feet of that building has to be flood proofing. It is a very difficult process to do. That means there are no electrical receptacles in this building below four feet. Period. No one, there's nothing that can be flooded and can't be replaced. So that's what they're proposing, proposing when they go to build a permit application. So that's their solution is there. It's not that it shouldn't be higher, such as you suggested. It's that they've chosen that they're just not going to do that because their clientele has got to be able to walk up. So they're not going upstairs. This is their pathway. It is legal, but that doesn't mean that it's actually going to be approved. We have a floodplain manager. She's a nice young lady, she takes her job very seriously. This site plan application and the building plan will have to go to our floodplain department. They have the opportunity to reject it at that point because it puts the city at risk. Because we, as the city, would be penalized for allowing that construction to occur, even though they're floodproofing it. Because we don't want to build those buildings that low. They can, but we want to discourage it. Now, I don't have a dog in the race, I'm saying, that's my understanding. Because that's what I do for a living. And it's a pathway, not an advantageous pathway. And then I'll just repeat, the applicant wishes to implement a multi-tenant flood proofing. Although this is not preferred by the city staff, it is allowable. So I hope that kind of answers your question is why they're doing it? It might do that, you know, you're kind of going back and forth, is the, hey, we flooded. Flooded bad. And here, we're going to approve a building to be built lower than everybody else. And you got to go, why? And at the same time, they're getting rid of what some might say is valuable extra flood space. The math sometimes works and sometimes doesn't. It's complicated. It's tough. On the flip side, property owner follows the rules, has a right to develop their land, even though it's just kind of, you know, that's that. Okay, so I hope that answered that question regarding the flood part.
All right, so at this point, absent any comments, please roll call, please. Motion through.
What are the conditions?
The city's conditions, you're killing me, I can't.
Well, I wrote, we're omitting number three, right?
Is eliminated.
Yep.
Okay.
We have an allowance in the timeline.
We have, we recommend, we strongly recommend an allowance on the timeline.
And how are we addressing the driveway variance?
That has to be, we're not addressing it. That has to be done by a.
It's not included in any motion that we've made.
Correct. Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Swenson?
No.
No.
Klein?
Yes.
Vice Chair Vesey?
Yes.
Chairperson Coscos.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Onto, first of all, I want to say very, very good discussion and very good analysis on this application. So thank everyone for that. Okay, board, board and staff comments. Any comments?
Nope, no comments, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, any board comments? Okay, the only comment I would say is, I just want to reiterate what I just said, is I really appreciate, you know, this is, this is the type of discussion and analysis that this board is, I think, vets very well. And there's no one calling anybody names.
We all appreciate that.
Yeah, we don't want that.
I do have a staff.
All right.
Just, and please indulge me.
What?
Is it, is it common?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is the positive. It's two-step. I noticed when I came in that we have a new clerk, a recording clerk.
Yes.
And maybe you all met the pretty young lady before, but I didn't, so.
Nope.
Do you want to stand up and say your name?
Yeah. Most of you actually know me. I was part of the Citizens Academy and about a year and a half ago, I was hired on and brought into Public Works. And about a month ago, I moved over to planning and zoning and took over for Kim after she left. So my name is Chloe and thanks for welcoming on.
All right, so that's Chloe, but that's not the end.
Okay.
The end is that when I saw Chloe, I was like, where is Ms. Kim Crichton? Because I've been around long enough that it was Crichton and then it became Ms. Y others. She happens to be my neighbor and she recently was married and has advanced because staff doesn't talk about it. The whole time she was working here as clerk, she put herself through planning and zoning school and has got a type of certification. Pat, you can speak to that?
Well, she's almost, almost finished with her, I think it's public administration degree at SAB College. She's got like two classes left.
And she's taken a position down in Sarasota, is that correct?
She, I don't know that she has a position at this point, but.
Okay.
She's looking.
Well, I miss you and Kim Crichton, Y others. We miss you, I miss you. And she served us so good for so long. I would just hope the best.
Yes, thank you. We miss her.
Anything else?
Nope.
Return.
Thank you.
You married?
Yes.
So white wear?